Mr. Mayor, Council. Just appreciate the great opportunity. I think as we discussed there and in council, day four, week two. Privilege to consult with y'all and continue to work with y'all. And a lot of this agenda transitioning out of the interim manager, Jim Dean and I kind of consulted and he'll play a role in tonight's meeting. Some updates that are pretty well in order from previous business. A lot of things that I've kind of worked in concert with the other departments. But nonetheless, just wanted to thank y'all for y'all's time and continued assurances. And with that, I don't know if it's here to give an update, but I guess Jim can-
I was probably optimistic putting Bill on first. Bill has a, had a 4:30 deposition. He was going to try to get out of there and be here for the start of the meeting. Hopefully, he will be able to make it because there may be questions throughout the evening. But he did give me an update on the Burton sewer line easement. He's going to be picking it up at the courthouse. He was picking it up the day we talked, which was yesterday. So that should be finalized and the Housing Authority able to start working on some of their projects. Next item has my initials on there. Update on the purchase of 125 North Main Street, the Integro property. Phil Landrum is handling that closing. He had started it when he was, when we borrowed the money from Community Bank. Got an email from him this morning that he's contacting Integro to see who needs to sign for them, whether that can be done locally or by someone out of town. And when that's done, he'll finalize the papers. He's finalizing the land boundary agreement that will have to be done on the side by Dr. Davis's property. So I feel good that's, that's going to happen.
I spoke to Phil at the reception about that and he said things are moving along. Also, I spoke to Carol Kaywood. I saw her at a function this week and basically just, she reiterated the fact that they're looking forward to working with us on that. And I think they do have a local attorney and they may be using if they need. And I kind of got the impression she can handle signing all that. Anyway, all still positive on all that.
If things are positive and Phil is, Phil's working toward getting it completed. He knows that this is something I'm interested in getting completed. Update on storm water upgrade on Highway 53 and Jones Street. That's where we have asked Ben Trell to prepare a quote for, preparing a plan for council to consider in improving storm water. At the Speedburger, best way to describe it. Ben is working on that. He was trying to figure out a way to use the topo information that Lonnie has on the GIS system that he's been working on for nearly a year now. Unfortunately, we found out that's in a 20-foot interval rather than the two foot that Ben needs. So he's adding some money to the quote for that work. There is a very small chance we have that ready and it could be considered Monday night. But I don't have it in my hands right now. If I do have it, I'll ask for consideration at the meeting Monday night.
Has he said anything about that sewer or storm water being through the middle of the Speedburger parking lot?
Through the middle of the Speedburger parking lot and potentially on the corner of the building.
Okay. Now, you mentioned that yet? I didn't realize we talked about that, but that's going to be very expensive.
Yeah, we, we have. And it could-
I've not, I've not heard him say that, so I just know where it went. That's fine, thank you.
Update on the, do they consider a pond maybe on the other side of the road?
We talked about that.
Well, he, that could be part of his plan when he gets approved to do the engineering work.
Yeah, because that's got to go somewhere.
Potential of a pond is far over on Copeland's property, plus one behind, what is it? Pritchard's Plaza.
Because that's all wetlands in our area. I don't know if it's able to build a pond on wetlands, but-
It's just behind last case in that area. It is.
I have spoken to both landowners and they both are agreeable to allow us to do that if we can, if it will help. So again, I hope that we, that I get the quote in my hands and we can discuss. If not, I'll have to carry that on to the next meeting. At the, what would it be? January, February meeting, we set up a committee over the electronic filing and building permits drawings and plans. Oh, alcohol sales amendment. I have done some research on that. Ann and I have not been able to get together to discuss, but on the Sunday sales, if we decide to move it to 11 o'clock, my, what I've determined is that we'll take a council's approval to put it on the ballot for public vote. And the next time we could put up anything from over the November election. The percent of alcohol to food sales, that's something that we can do with the ordinance. And Ann and I'll, I'll try to get Ann to stay out of Ireland long enough so that we can determine how to move on that. Okay? Update on electronic filing, building permits drawings and plans. Kirk, I got your initials on there.
So last meeting, we had a presentation about the electronic filing systems. And we had a little explanation as to what we could expect from the vendor and what we could expect of the software itself. I have some questions I want to follow up with on other vendors. There are multiple vendors in the state that offer these solutions. I've reached out to the GMA. They did provide some information. I'm waiting on some more follow-up information. And that's about all I have right now. I've kind of been waiting.
And Jim, I think in terms of what you and I talked about on the next item, we did receive in terms of the Gateway to the Mountains development. We did receive this afternoon kind of a plan set from the developers. Recall this was the PUD development up at 108 and 510, I believe it is. And to consider the gateway. In terms of, from a naming perspective, they advised us today that I think they're naming it Grand View Gateway. So kind of moving forward, you may hear that, Grand View Gateway, I believe. And what-
Gateway to the Mountains, I think.
Something of that nature, yes. So we've kind of got a plan set. Sunny and Underwood and Lonnie Waters and I are going to kind of take a look at it and look at, I think council had previously approved the zoning. And without knowing all the history, I think there was a desire to ensure that the conceptual way out plan met the intent of what the PUD was offering. So we're going to have to look at that to ensure that it's in line with expectation.
So what I would like to, for council to consider, as you remember at the meeting when this was approved, the request was for the developer to bring the plans, let the council have a chance to look at them. We had discussed Mike Costanzo, who has a history of approving such plans. And neither Sunny or I had been involved bringing Mike in to help on the thing. And what I would like for council to do consider is possibly setting up a committee of Mike, Brandon, City Manager, Sunny, Underwood, and members of council, possibly mayor and a member of the council to review the plan and make the recommendation to council. I think having the whole council look at it could be a overkill when you start adding Mike and others to the, to the review. So with your permission, I'd like to have that as an item on the agenda that we could discuss Monday night to potentially set up a committee.
So there's a public hearing required for the approval of the plans. Just the, now that the zoning is in place, it's more of a-
Yeah, this was something that was requested at the time it was approved. That we, the council have another opportunity to look at it before we start setting concrete.
And part of what I'd like to do is, in terms of some of my experience in looking at things and kind of, in terms of setbacks and just, to me, create the expectations of what council had anticipated with this PUD, whether for things to parky, green space, et cetera. So kind of take that direction and make sure that the plans as presented is agreeable to the mayor and council to make sure we can get quality development out there.
So when you read that ordinance branding, you'll see there are lots of requirements that kind of are all lumped together, different and a bone different from our regular zoning, including homeowners association establishment prior to construction. That particular piece of property is kind of interesting that it actually went from R3 to PUD, which is kind of unique. They actually decreased their, they had, Phase 1 or Phase 2, whatever it is, they had R3 approval and actually decreased their density when they brought it to Forests.
I think the mayor has one question on easement for water or something with the property next to it.
Something. Comment that when that property was originally brought into the city, we acknowledged that there was going to be residential property. And at that time, it was a general consensus, and I think we actually go back into the minutes and get the exact footage that it was set aside as. The front part was going to be commercial and the back part was going to be residential. And, but it was a very vague description because that's only been about 15 years ago. And, but it was, and they didn't know when they wanted to build it and how they wanted to build it. They just wanted to get it in the city of Jasper and so they could start working on it. But that was the only way, they didn't know what they wanted to build. So if you look back, Jim, you might actually have been on the planning commission at the time when we annexed it into the city. But that being said, we kind of swapped that out generally. And the owners of the property today didn't have anything to do with it then. So they just took a very general zoning of the property and it agreed to go with the planned unit development. And, and I believe Mr. Douglas will be able to recognize all of the pitfalls of a PUD that is not firmly and specifically designed. And I believe Mr. McLaughlin is nowhere near the plans I saw to where you're going to have to be to satisfy council. Because you tell me you did see streetlights, you didn't see any playgrounds.
And that's kind of why I think I had put on here is perhaps not, not right at the moment for a final review because I do think there are some additional things that need to be clarified in terms of, you know, they've got the basics in terms of 15-foot front setback, six-foot side setback, 12 feet in between structures, minimum 4,000 square for lot size. Some concerns or things that I would like to see in terms of development standards is just sidewalks and/or green space calculations and/or ensure the density meets what council would expect along with adequate parking and things of that nature. So part of what I would like to do is just kind of bringing myself up to speed, what the standards set forth by this council are, kind of put into practice some of the things that I've done in the past. And just, I think mayor, what Jim was asking is if on Monday, we could kind of give us direction at the staff level to kind of get that, get that going.
And a PUD is a very difficult thing to get approved. I mean, you almost, on all those 100-plus lots, you've almost got to know exactly how the house is going to lay on that lot to achieve your setbacks. And the thing that we've got to look at, you can travel around town and see Navajo Trail. You turn off of Navajo Trail, you're in a carport. You can't allow that on this property otherwise. Arbor Hills, we have a couple of lots there that you don't have enough room for two or three cars to visit. And you get neighbors complaining because people are parking on the streets. So we can avoid this with scrutinizing the dimensions and extra off-street parking and things you'll have to have when you have 100-plus people living on, how many acres we finally decided that one?
Did they not talk about doing an additional parking lot?
Well, they have one little parking area that I saw that's around the-
It was very little, what I saw.
And the clubhouse and they-
They don't even explain that either.
Their original plan, again, they have a, I don't know what the total acres of that is. They only approved us, it has to be 15 acres with the ED. They approved a very small portion of their total land with the ED. And when they presented it to us, they were very specific that it, at least it sounded like it met the 10% green space and the parking around the clubhouse and maybe even had two clubhouses.
And part of it is, this literally came in this afternoon, so we haven't had a full day's of that. But in the spirit of wanting to make sure, take advantage of this court session, seeing the mayor and council up to speed, I think it's prudent to say, keep your rest.
So I guess they got all their APD stuff.
That is, that is, the limestone valley has approved. So that, from that aspect, the erosion control has been signed off and approved on that. And I think the next logical phase is they'll begin getting ready to mobilize in terms of the erosion measures, BNP's and self-fence. And I think what we are doing next is the design development standards on the site layout itself. So, yes.
Yeah, they're going to have to haul off about 50,000 tons of dead trees and sawdust. All that stuff's still over there. I mean, remember it burnt for years.
That's not on that property.
That's on Mr. Snow's property.
Yeah, that's cost, cost-
Between Snow and where they grew it.
Yeah.
So there's another property in between trees and where you go into, where they dumped the leach acid?
Yes.
Yes. About that.
So that, mayor and council, that's kind of the deal on that one. Kind of lead into, just now, do you want to talk about Tuesday, our public hearing? We did have the requisite, I think you're aware, this past Tuesday, the public hearing on the wastewater plant.
I called the session to order and Chris Pogey made the presentation. And it's on video for you if you want to look at it. And it explains pretty much, Chris did an excellent job explaining every detail. And then after it was done, I called for questions and Dan Poole made a few questions, had a few questions. And I had a few questions, basically to clarify the history of this process, of this project. And, but if you're interested in knowing the details on it, none of you were there, I'm sure you had a business. But that would be interesting to watch. Because it's going to be coming at you pretty quick. There was no, there was no-
No public-
No public, except for the press. Mayor didn't have a question.
Counsel on the next item concerning the approval of purchase of vehicle for JFD. I may have jumped a gun and if I did, I apologize. But it is in the budget to purchase a vehicle for the fire department. It's on the budget for round numbers, $37,000. We were able to get a price of $36,000, got a little bit below budget. And this has got a long lead time. I was surprised at the length of the lead time on this.
Hopefully, they fired everybody. Chevrolet fired everybody then.
Well, it maybe, maybe is.
How long is the lead time, just to carry on?
I had to go back and look. It was much longer than, than I was hoping for.
We don't usually do purchases until fall, just in case we have budget issues anyway. So it worked out pretty well.
And probably this probably go into the fall because of that. But I did not ask for council's approval on that. If council would like, we can add that to the agenda and discuss approval of the purchase. Again, it is on the budget.
Jim, since you, I think the engine's next. Why don't you discuss these together because one, it's not on the budget and you're going to have some serious issues.
Well, mayor, if you don't mind, I would like to inject a little humor that Chief Roper presented me on my first day with the opportunity to acclimate myself with our stellar finance team and to kind of sit and say how they, there was an issue with engine two. 03 model, there was a lot of uncertainty as to what happened. I think they have concluded that, I'm about to give you a broad range here, that it could be anywhere from $7,400 up to about $30,000 worth of fix. Meaning that Caterpillar has diagnosed, kind of preliminary diagnostics that the, if they get authorization, they can crack open and look to see if there's a gasket that is causing the issue. And if that's such, it's a $7,400 fix. If, if not, then obviously it will kind of continue to be staged out, whether it's a cracked head and/or a total rebuild of the engine, which would be up to $30,000. Chief Roper and I met with Lisa to kind of seek out, you know, in the fire department's budget, there are some identified items that if in fact we're able to put this on Monday, and I would like for this to be on Monday's agenda, for consideration of, you know, we got to have fire engine two. Right now, they put back in service number two, 98 model. Had been pushed back, obviously. So we'd like to consider up to $30,000 authorization, rebuild the whole load if need be. But, and if that's the case, there are some expenditures in our department's budget that could be eliminated or reallocated for said expense.
That's kind of scary, the 98. I remember when it was new.
Well, I quickly, I quickly-
That was the worst one I ever drove.
I quickly learned some of these numbers and like I said, it's one of those, they, they thinking and hoping for the $7,400 fix. Just as a point of reference, we'll have for y'all the estimates on Monday. But of the 7,400, 7,500, about 5,400 is labor. So when I heard gasket, I thought, well, surely that's not a very expensive, $2,000 or less. But the labor in and of itself is what threw me off. And as such, if it goes beyond the 7,400, most likely, we would have to just do a total rebuild rather than continue to piecemeal into that creeping to 14,000, 15,000. So, mayor, just-
That was a present.
That's awesome. I mean, just, we just bought them a brand new one as well last year, I believe it was, wasn't it?
Just got there.
Chief Roper's president, day one.
The fire department doesn't have much wiggle in its budget. I think they've got a pavilion, a parking lot that they want to pay this year.
Parking lot and some stone on the front of the building.
And the vehicles are the only thing that's, that's wigglable unless we go into another department, so.
They also had, and I didn't tell you, I saw them later on there. They also had an expense this year that we weren't expecting for something called Interaction Public Safety 911. $15,000.
$15,000.
I didn't have that on the paper, I was looking at it when y'all came in yesterday.
That is the interface with the 911 system. And my understanding is that was on the budget.
No. It was not on the budget. We didn't know about it. Steve told me he didn't know about it until this year.
So we spent money on it?
That money, yeah.
It wasn't approved?
Or it's kind of, I, well, I've got it written down, it would be, I don't have my, later we can-
We don't know how much is in the budget for the stone and the parking lot.
Both coming together, about $30,000. Strange and intriguing.
Yes. Well, thank God they got a new fire truck, so at least we got two in place.
The stone and the parking lot will be there next year. I'll find guys, what they do, the fire will do the stone work. Same guy must be building a pavilion too.
We have lots of pavilions over here.
It's always been the case. So with your permission, we propose these on the agenda.
And we'll get with, we'll get with finance.
You can have Steve here that night and explain a little bit as well.
I think the next, mayor, Jim and I were not, kind of tagged in a little bit. I guess there's, this is updates of sorts of some mayor appointments and committee assignments or something, Jim?
Right. We do have someone wanting to apply for a rezoning of partial on South Main Street. We have not appointed, reappointed a person to the planning and zoning board. I did talk to Luke concerning his interest in continuing on planning and zoning. He said he was willing to, to continue if appointed. I think I'd like to have an agenda item to consider appointing him and any of the other appointments that have not been completed yet at Monday night's meeting. So we can start scheduling some, some meetings on that, that board.
And Mr. Mayor, I, and council, I did take the liberty of just kind of looking at some things and consideration and/or otherwise, just something about boards and just a quick little thing of review. I did not, as a disclaimer, consult with legal and clerk and the ordinance organization thereof. So pardon my lack of coordination there. I was up last night and I figured I'd kind of take a look at that. You'll see, I'm sorry.
Oh, you're good.
But basically, look at, just kind of give some parameters for the planning and zoning commission. I think section two, the boards, there's kind of a reserved spot for some enumeration. But basically, just throw this out there for council's direction or consulting with- with, with legal to look at it. I think the way Mayor, it's done, I think is legal will take a look at an ordinance, if I recall, and then there would be a first reading necessary, and then there's a second reading, I believe, for ordinance, is that correct?
Yes, there's two readings.
Okay. So just kind of wanted to throw this out there at the work session, just kind of something, there may or may not be some things that need to be washed out, and just kind of about it tonight for y'all.
So as I was the one that kind of put the cog in the wheel, I guess, I wanted to verify and validate that what Mr. Pickett had told us was accurate, that these positions could roll over. And unfortunately, when I was looking for the, actually the laws that establish the operation of planning and zoning, couldn't find any.
I don't, I couldn't find them either.
Well, what about, what about our other, the other example, second, that night, do we, the mayor had two?
It was three reappointments.
Three.
So there, there, they did have ordinances that established those structures. Planning, housing, the housing authority is Don Byers, and that's actually a state law, I believe, that establishes the, if there's nobody to take their place, they roll over. And then on the zoning appeals board, which was Karen, they likewise on local ordinance allow that. I had the conversations with, obviously with Karen, but also Don and Luke, telling them that, you know, that we'll get this all squared, squared away and straightened out and move forward.
So. I was just gonna say, so procedural, I had no, Mayor, if this was something that we would want to, I thought Mr. Pickett would be here, but I can deal with him tomorrow and provide him with a copy.
Oh, you want to do a change to what you're carrying?
Well, this would be, this would be added into, I believe, on the second page, he gives article five under boards of the Jasper, and, and I need to get with Lisa about specifically, but this is what I, what I found in terms of division two, excuse me, division two, section two, you got construction board of adjustment appeals, and then there's division three, planning and zoning, section two, and then there's zoning board of appeals. So this would just kind of follow in line, this first page would just follow in line with, with the other.
Well, we already have that, but.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. So that's, that's kind of what I was doing, is just looking at.
Did this come from Munico?
The first page?
Yes, sir.
No, sir, I didn't have.
Okay.
Well, let me refer to that. I, I may have borrowed it from another jurisdiction that I was dealing with.
I'll, I'll discuss it with you, but.
Further between now and then.
Yes, sir.
It was pretty clear.
It used to be a lot clearer before we got Munico involved, a very simple book at the time.
But that was, that was all I had on, on that.
So can we, have that as a potential agenda item?
I will approve that as a matter of.
Okay. Next item, there is a need to add Brendan D. Douglas and remove Jim Looney as approved check signers. That takes a resolution from counsel, and I'd like to have that added to the agenda. Next item, discussion of 2019 paving program. Lonnie, Mayor, Council.
Today, the city went down and met with the county and talked about all the different streets and roads that the city and county both maintained due to the fact that part of them are in the city and part of it's in the county. So we sat down and had a good discussion with the county, and we've been doing this ever since the splosh was passed, which is due to be reviewed next year. And so we've created a list of this, and the main thing is, just need approval from Chair, the commission board, and the council to move forward and be able to negotiate with the county. Some of the streets, like we've done in the past, is just simply, if one company is going to come in and do the road and save the city owns five hundred foot of it, they can, we'll either trade it out with the county, or the, we'll go out and mark the street where the city starts and the county starts, and then that company will just send us an invoice to pay for our section. So it's worked good for four years, and I'd like to move forward with that and get the council to consider that for approval Monday night. There's a couple of other things.
Lonnie, if you would, the council could give an example of Camp Road was mentioned a few minutes ago, part of that's in the city, parts not.
Yes.
Explain, because it starts at intersection, the four-way stop at the jail, and from there to the, a quick trip is city. How would you do that?
Okay, actually, that was on my second statement here, Camp Road. There's been quite a bit of discussion, and there's been some confusion about that. Actually, if you started the four-way stop at the jail on A.W. Lawson or Industrial Boulevard and moved toward the four lane, when you get to the old Chevrolet place, the old Lawson Chevrolet, everything from the four-way stop of the old Lawson Chevrolet is city. Then from Lawson, from the corner of Lawson Chevrolet out to the edge of the four lane is county.
Is state.
Excuse me?
From Lawson Chevrolet to the four lane is state. We go, we go to state right away and.
Okay. From, from what I've understood in, in the discussions, there's a street in there that's county between cities and the state. Because Lawson Chevrolet or where Mr. Logan, C.D. Logan's property is, neither one of them's in the city. Neither one of them's in annexed.
How far is state right away? How many feet is state right away?
It's three hundred foot wide.
It's all the way to Lawson, really Lawson driveway.
Okay.
That was not.
So what about the other way?
That was annexed when Billy Newton was commissioner, and it was perfectly clear during the council and the mayor and the county commissioner at the time, that the, from the intersection at Industrial Boulevard, A.W. Lawson, to D.O.T. right away was City of Jasper. And then you cross the road, City of Jasper crosses again, and we got Camp Road all the way to fifty-three. I don't know who's changed that or why that changed, but that was not the original agreement. Now, why, people want to know why the city don't have the road in front of the jail all the way to five fifteen is because the commissioner at that time was working on the jail, that being Billy Newton, and he did not want the city to get in the middle of his process, because he didn't want to take that hill down at the time. And of course, he got beaten election, and the road never came down, and we never annexed it in. But we went all the way to the state right away per mayor and commissioner and council agreement during those days. I don't know who's changed it, somebody, the county probably didn't get it done or whatever the case may be, but that was the original intent. We've always claimed it, and I assumed we were going to pay for it all the way, because we actually, we actually helped pay years ago when we did the traffic light. The traffic light's the City of Jasper responsibility, and we actually paid part of the cost to pave the intersection all the way to Lawson Chevrolet at the time, and nobody from the county volunteered to pay for it then. So, but anyway, you might check those numbers.
Okay. Well, due to, let's say the Camp Road going by the bargain bar, that has created some issues because there's potholes, and the city's been going and repairing some of them, and so is the county. I wasn't aware that all of Camp Road through there was supposed to be in city, but the way that it's brought up due to annexations based on that, we would own, the city would maintain from the four lane to a little gravel road going up to the back side of the airport called Nicky Fay Lane.
Well, the county commissioner specifically gave the City of Jasper that road so that we could annex it in and run sewer and water, whatever we had to do out that road, because at that time, the state patrol folks didn't even have sewer, didn't have the water, all the necessities, just you checked that, but I know what the agreement was, and if I got rode up at the county courthouse, I don't know.
I think you're on the opposite side of five fifteen.
We're on opposite.
Than what John's talking. No, you're talking about in front of the bargain bar, and I always took Wendy, and he was.
No, you, you, you jumped, no, you jumped, I didn't cross the road.
Okay.
I stayed on the other side of the road.
Okay, so as an example, like you asked before, from the four lane to Nicky Fay Lane, which is in front of what used to be Jasper Motorsports, the motorcycle place, according to annexations of the properties, city owns property on both sides, so that the road is a city street there. And nothing from there, both sides have not been annexed in from that point to the east side of Wendy's parking lot. So that was county as far as annexations go. And then from Wendy's, the driveway to Bojangles going in, from there out to fifty-three is city again, according to the annexation part.
According to the agreement of nineteen, two thousand and one or two thousand and two, that wasn't the case. Because it's crazy to stop the road off right in the middle and gap it like that. I, I've, I've never heard of that before until you mentioned it.
And I think, Mayor, what Lonnie was able to do is coordinate with county staff in terms of, and I think, I think what the question was in terms of paving and getting it handled, I think, I think the county has got it on its schedule to do the entire.
I think, I think, I know, I'm sorry, I think I know what the problem, what happened. They gapped that to prevent creating an island for state law purposes.
Probably.
And that's the greatest reason on the planet, but that might be the break of it. But that would then be the only reason we would have done that then.
But anyway, for the public.
Surrounded everything.
The rail and all that would be the island.
Because a lot of that property wasn't in the city now, now, now ninety percent of it, all except for Ms., what's the lady's name that lives behind Bojangles?
Miss Davis.
That's about the only house that's not in the city, the whole thing.
Okay, but in, in our conversation, the county has agreed, and it's on their lame, lame list, that they are going to pave Camp Road from fifty-three to the four-way stop at the jail. So they are going to pave all of that, that's part of that city property.
Thank you very much.
City roads, but the county is, is, has got it on their lame.
They already working on it, aren't they?
Excuse me? That was city crew.
Been out there paying it, hold. This weekend.
But.
Well, we, we, we paved it twice.
Yes. In return, the city is going to work for the county and pave as far as length of the road.
And let me, let me stop you and say, we're all about it, because let me tell you what the deal is, and Brendan and I talked about it today, it's just, it's just mobilization cost. It's crazy to stop and start, because you wouldn't, wouldn't be able to afford it. That's all Lonnie's trying to say. I want to explain it, I didn't mean to create a war on it.
And I think councilman found, I heard it, I think Lonnie, they were, they were going to beef up the paving.
Yes, normally we use an inch and a half of asphalt on all of our streets, and so do they. They're going to put two inches on Camp Road to make it a better road, level of road, and they're going to look at widening as much as possible, but the ditch, the gradeage ditches are a major problem through there, so they're going, they're going to upgrade it completely.
Okay.
The third thing, as far as roads, there's been a lot of questions in the last week or two about what we call the big project. There was statements made that had been postponed again in two thousand and twenty-four. So I have been in contact with D.O.T. and Carrefour, who is over the sixth district, which is us, and they say that all their information says that they will start the process in September of two thousand and twenty. They also gave me a contact in Atlanta, and they said that this lady, if anybody's changed anything, she will know it. So I called her, and she said all her information says September two thousand and twenty. So I asked her for a new pole road, which is a mound of the whole thing, like we've had, about ten foot long, of the whole entire project. And she said that that, there was no use in her sending us one of them, because they were changing it right now for the final plans, and that they would have a public hearing or public meeting here in Pickens County sometime between May and July before this starts. So, and she said that she would give us a, one of the roads of this mound and these plans, you know, by then, after they completed them. So everything is still, from Atlanta to Carrefour, still says September two thousand and twenty.
Well, they're paving all over Pickens County, fifty-three, Marble Hill, and redoing the J-turn, which in the paper sounded so wonderful, but they just, somebody needs to politic. D.O.T. passes by for you. Lonnie, how many streets do we look like have an all-star plan?
Well, there's approximately thirty-one, but lots of them are like five hundred feet, four hundred feet. It's where we blend into the county, so there's, there's thirty-one streets if we don't swap work with the county. There's thirty-one streets that we will be on, but in, in the negotiation with the county, I mean, that could drop down to twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and, you know, we'll be doing it that way.
And you said the splosh is going to be up next year?
Yes.
What, in June?
I'm not sure.
It's like it might start in June of six years ago.
Yes.
That's right. So someone's going to need to start negotiating. It's also going to be a referendum on that, redo a referendum or not redo, does it, is a six-year splosh?
I think so.
Got to be a referendum.
Do we, do we have a timetable that we anticipate those streets will be done?
What we were wanting to shoot for in past discussions with the mayor and Jim and everybody involved, we'd like to do one big paving contract in the spring and just get them all, get everything done. We're looking at between nine and eleven miles, something like that of it all.
We have close to a million dollars, don't we, now?
We've got over a million dollars now, and we will have more in a couple more months, so we should be in, in close proximity to.
We need to get that spent before it's, uh.
Yes.
The six years.
But then we got, you know, we're looking at sidewalks and our lame this year, sixty-seven thousand dollars for lame is going toward the sidewalks around town, across from Tana Hooch Tech, down South Main, different areas that are becoming dilapidated and need improvement. So we're moving forward with those.
So I don't see anything on the agenda for that yet, unless you've got documents ready to.
I, I, I think, I think, I think a quick motion of letting him work with the county on combining those streets.
All right.
When do we start our plan? How, what's the?
For the time we start, we'll finish it. What is that, what is that timetable that we're looking at?
Well, it's according to weather, of course, but toward the end of March, first of April.
I'm talking about when we first started this project, how, how long? What year did we first start paving?
Thirteen, fourteen? Thirteen, fourteen?
This will be, from now to twenty twenty, it'll be the sixth year.
Okay.
So it'll be.
I'll be fourteen. And I was just, the reason I was asking is the mayor brought up the fact that we might need to look into.
might need to look into, I'm just looking at the gap in between us starting and finishing, how long it would be before we would need to restart this project again.
You'd need to be meeting with the commissioner now.
And that's why I asked your question.
Yes. And the commissioner was not in that meeting today, but his employees over the street, Rodney and Johnny, they were there, and I just received a text, they were writing everything we said by them, by, by Rob himself, and he said that he agreed with everything we'd said today, but he'll have to write it for the other two commissioners also.
And part of the mayor, just to clarify too, one thing that Monty and I advised the county staff was that we're having this meeting tonight, and that we would need to seek direction to your point on how we was going at the staff level, just kind of get this accomplished for our citizens, is to kind of get this going. So I think, I think it was a good timing on all parts.
Okay, next three items, I believe Mr. Hall can handle those.
Any certain orders yet?
I've got the roll-off on first, then the wet well replacement and water tanks after that.
Okay, first one, the roll-off truck that we use to haul the sludge dumpsters off to the landfill, the rear end has come out of it, and we're needing to replace that rear end, remove and replace the differentials, two U-joints, we're going to have to remove the carrier to do this, and we're looking at about, probably expensive, about $6,500 to repair the roll-off truck and get it back and running order.
Do you have that in the house, though?
No, Wormy's doing it, Wormy's trucking equipment, it's, the rear end on that thing, you've got to take that whole carrier part off the back of it, so you really needed like a small boom truck to do it with, so we just had him do it. It's only $800 in labor, the materials themselves is $5,600.
So you're going to do it on site?
Yeah, yeah, and you'd have a record bill moving it up here, yeah, because it's, it's inoperable where it's at. But that'll put us back in business right now, it costs you about $300 a dumpster. You know, we got in that business when we first started, and it just don't work, so I'd like for, to be on the agenda to approve for him to fix the rear end of the dumpster truck. Any questions?
You have quotes that we include in the packages for Monday night?
On the rear end?
Yeah.
I haven't asked anybody else, I mean, he's done all of our other work, I can get somebody else to quote it, I guess, but.
No, I think for that amount, it's fine to have one quote in at least.
$6,500.
I think it is.
But something for council to look at, when it's just.
$50,000, no doubt.
I figure he's giving you some sort of piece of paper.
Okay, yes. Yeah, and I'll, I'll give this out, it's like a estimate sheet, it's got everything on it. Next, the wet well pump, that's a wastewater treatment plant. This is a 20-horse motor, went out, this motor's been, that's a wastewater plant, I know myself at least 15 years, probably longer, and it went out, and to have it rebuilt was about $8,900, and to purchase another one is $9,900. So I was going to ask for the council mayor's consideration of just purchasing a new one, and they, I'll have two quotes, one of them will be for a different type motor, but by the time you do the attachments to set the other motor, it will be higher than just replacing the motor that's there with a new one, of the same brand, which is flat, which I'm sure Tony, when Tony talked about.
What pump was that tank, motor tank?
The wet well, you know, at the treatment plant, you know, the one that whenever you're bringing the pond in, or you're decanting, or anything to do with the plant itself, it's about 16 feet in the ground, and whenever you do anything at the plant, everything drains to there, and then it pumps it back to the inlet. So, I mean, I don't ever remember it being replaced, do you?
You guys will put it in?
Yeah, yeah, we'll do that part in-house, we just, and we were hoping that the rebuild would be cheaper than that, but Flats pretty much made it, exiled them, whatever you want to call them, me and Tony had talked about that, they pretty much made it to where you buy new, you don't rebuild anymore.
What kind of warranty coming on that?
A year.
A year?
Yeah.
How about with the rebuild? How about with the rebuild?
Eighty-nine.
No warranty, no warranty?
No warranty, we rebuild.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, that's what it'd be worth, get no warranty.
I apologize for leaving the word pump out of the equation.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we'll move on to the forestry tank. We had talked earlier about painting the industrial part tank, I was going to ask mayor and council's permission to move that to the forestry tank, just for, you know, both of them are needing, needed painting. It's been 2002 since this one was put in, so we're looking at 17 years, and with the location of it being on 515 and the other two tanks on 515 being new, this one's starting to look like a faded can, so it would look better if we went ahead and done this one this year.
What kind of price is this, maybe?
Hopefully in the $100,000 range is what y'all had approved, so hopefully it will be within that range, and the only thing I'm asking to be put on there is for that to be bid out, asking permission to get bids, in quotes.
You want to have Ben to bid for it?
Yes, yes.
And also, before the tanks, if you notice, the one at Lily Circle is starting to corrode over again.
Yeah.
And I truly believe that's from the cellular tower attached to it, cellular whatever, apparatus attached to it. But anyway, they paid pretty good, so I guess it paid for itself. It's kind of like when you put, when you paint $100,000 and you let these guys go up and hang cellular apparatus, it's like letting somebody ride on your new Mercedes paint job, it breaks my heart, but it's been good.
I couldn't believe it'd been 2002 since the forestry tank was built.
I know.
Seventeen years, that's.
But they, they pay, I think, we have Sprint and Verizon?
I know, one of them's $25,000 a year, I don't know about the other one.
It could be more, I believe, in the future, you might negotiate that.
You know what the other one is? One of them's about 25, I can't remember.
You don't want to neglect those towers.
Yeah, just asking permission to.
What about the Woodbridge Tower? It's looking kind of faded as well.
Can we paint that a different color?
Free time to consider.
I like to paint it some way you painted the others, with the CDM one. It'd go good with the clock tower at Jasper Drugs, and look good with that.
I think next year you might need to think about it, because I noticed that the little hatch is kind of blown around, and it looks exposed, you might have somebody look at that.
Yeah, they were up there last year, you know, done inspection and the cleaning of it.
Was cleaned early, early last year.
Yes.
They greased that one inside, didn't they?
Yeah, all of them, all of the interiors of them are in great shape.
That tower was offline in 92, and we actually painted it, and the metal, the metal on that one is as good as the one you built today. Built in 1931?
Nineteen thirty-four.
And David, the, the paint for water tank was in your budget, right?
Yes, ma'am.
The other two are not.
And I think you might check.
Yes, no, they're not, they can be ruled down with supplies and parts, and y'all had approved $40,000 for the building and pump. And that's not going to need to be done, that was Lisa, we put that on last year.
Okay, I was just, yeah.
Hundred shouldn't cover that, I think eighty or ninety was the last time we got a price on it.
Yeah, I don't think we've ever had a 500 painted, have we? That's what I didn't know.
Two fifty. This is two fifty at the industrial park, these are only three 500s we got.
The one out there, forestry's a 500. I didn't know, it may be a little bit higher.
How long does it generally take to start fixing the paint ones?
Not long, at least like a month.
Yeah, you got to be careful, because the last time we had the one built, had the one built on Liberty Lane, came back from rural water, and they had the lettering all out of wax from the other ones, and they had to come back and repaint it, so you got pissed at David, or this time, don't let them get away with it. Tell them to make it look just like those other two, you got a sample.
I think the Woodbridge tank with the CDM on one side of it would look excellent. It really does, the white and the green would really go with that. That's all I got.
All right, we will put those items on the agenda. Got a message from Kirk some days ago about a Brownie troop, would like to make a presentation. Kirk, can you tell us a little bit about that?
So we have a local Brownie troop, they meet over here in Methodist Church, I believe they're eight to nine-year-old girls, they've been working and studying, and they're, they're learning about recycling and conservation of water. And Jasper Conservation of Water is a huge deal, and so I reached out to them, and they would like to come and make a short presentation to us on why that's important, give us a short, brief education, and I will meet with them tomorrow to get some more, some more information.
We'd like that first item under new business.
Yes, please.
Get them, get them home.
Yes, please. If I may, we do have two recycling cans here at City Hall, if we could just have them in here for a fundamental charity.
I'm sure that could be arranged.
And I think from staff's perspective, on Mr. Mayor and Council, another thing that may or may not be something to move forward with, and I did meet with a couple of staff members today that pertains to IT email, part of what I'm going to try to dive into as well is, is in terms of if there's any opportunities and/or challenges you'd like to ask staff to look into emails or ITs, just kind of wanted to put that out there. I'm learning a little bit as I go about what some of the things we have, backup, servers, et cetera, so just kind of wanted to put it on for, go to the order.
I finally got most of my stuff resolved, Monty, I think part of it's my hardware house, and, but I was able to, Tara was able to, on my iPad this week, we work together where I can now, I can use it for searching emails, and the way it threads sometimes, it's kind of bizarre how you, things line up, but, but I was able to make some progress this week.
I actually had a meeting, sorry, go ahead.
I might have resolved the fact that my computer at home is not, you know, it's just not going to work that well on it, but I think it's more my hardware issue than it is, and I have an older version of Outlook that's downloaded, loaded on it.
I actually met with ETC, one of the boys here, have a new cell phone, so I don't believe the hardware's the issue, it has the latest and brightest as of two weeks ago, I'm still experiencing issues receiving emails. Same thing on my laptop, I have, it's set up on my laptop, has one of the latest versions I work, and I'm still having issues receiving. It seems though, if I reach out to someone first, then I can receive emails back from them, but if I never make that initial contact, they cannot reach me through email, it bounces back with an error message. And a couple of schools email me and just call me and say, send you an email, just keeps bouncing back, some civic organizations, and so I get some of the emails, Miss Lisa, I think I've missed a couple of yours, so I may be shooting you a test email here in a day or two.
And I think mayor and council, part of it was just to, just to have this kind of discussion in the event, I had anticipated to meet with ETC, just in terms of, for my own benefit, and so as I kind of continue that, I can kind of take to them any concerns or opportunities to strengthen that up, so if they've got anything else, let me know. I honestly don't know when I'm going to meet with them, but figured this pretty great opportunity just to bridge the subject with y'all.
And with that, takes us to the final item, items of interest to mayor and council.
Well, I could do this after the fact, but I'm just now thinking about it and I forgot, I got a phone call about, is it Living Word Church across from where your wife works?
Yes.
Could you, I talked to Brandon, check the drainage on, I think they're having some washout issues, and I have forgotten all about telling anybody, and I got a couple phone calls on that, if you take a look at that and see what needs to be done. Brandon, I didn't mean to circle bench you there.
Well, sir, thank you.
I would have forgotten it.
Since you brought the drainage issue up. Did somebody go down and look at the corner of Mary Hands? Their crossfire wall was just about to blow out, there's actually a ditch cut, pretty deep, it's running across into Crystal's yard, and at one point in time, back probably a month ago, our front yard was in mud.
Yeah, we went over there and looked at it at the time, Monty talked to folks at the, at the restaurant, I guess we did need to get back on that with Monty.
Also, there's an issue at their entrance to Mary Hands off of Georgia Anna, the concrete has, I mean, it has broken all pieces, and I have talked to the owner of the property in Calhoun, and, you know, Mary Hands would appreciate if it was fixed and help control some of that stormwater, but the owner has agreed, he thinks it's our, our problem, our water line, that's created a, maybe a little ground is settled, but he has agreed that if we go in there and saw a smooth edge, and we dig into it and we find out that it's not our problem, that he will pay to fix it back, and, but if it is our problem, he'd like for us to fix it, and this is just a conversation we've had, there's not been any action taken about it, nobody's agreed on anything, but this is what he's wanting us to do if possible.
And that's one of the things, if it ever quits raining, we could, we could schedule and get that done fairly quickly, but.
Our water lines and that ditch.
Yes, it is, and that could be a problem with the wall, I'm not saying it is, but it comes right out by there.
Don't we have a fire hydrant at the wall?
Yeah, I think so.
You might, you might would rather work there than let someone else do it, unless they want to build a wall back.
But the owner, the owner of the property is agreeing to work with us, you know, if we can.
Dollars.
Yes, yes.
Is that more private property?
More than likely, it's going to be very close to private property, but it's actually affecting our stormwater.
I don't know what the right of way is for Georgia Anna, we can see.
That crosstide was put in there.
It's going to be very close to the wall.
I think they put that crosstide on it, didn't they?
Ah, yeah, we wouldn't have, any year. That was, that was back when it was hardies years ago.
Yes.
Crosstides don't last that long, they need to be replaced.
Those were Hardee's?
Yeah.
Actually, they tore the Hardee's down and came back and rebuilt, built this as an Hardee's.
There was a Hardee's in one.
Did he tear it down?
Or just? I thought they remodeled.
Cotton, cotton trencher, the owner of Speedburg, the one that said that Hardee's the only best that's ever hurt him.
That's what it was when I lived here.
Then, then they didn't, couldn't last, cotton.
Any other items for discussion?
It's not a problem, we're still on video, I want, we need to get out there and talk about cotton trencher.
That'll all be ours, Mayor.
You think?
Yeah. Yeah, that's on the road. I mean, we might not have built one there, but we built one, three down, didn't we? Or three up, one.
But that's all it is, but that needs to be.
Uh, that's all it is, but we, that needs to be rebuilt, all this. We've already looked at it, the crossties are caving in.
The other roads?
Kind of, kind of, the XLD cell lane, but, what, what little you got? Jim, Brendan, I'm done.
Sure they work, everybody?